Can you hear us?
I can.
Looks like we had some technical issues, but now we're all back, so. What that issue was, but here we go. And I'll share the screen so we can all see the agenda.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for, uh, thanks for playing the, the tech game there. And we can start out with the call to order and, and the welcome and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under our invisible liberty and justice for all. So I'm just gonna kind of skip through, uh, agenda item two, board operating principles, to section three additions to the issues, change of agenda items, anything?
I don't, I haven't been notified of any additions to the agenda. We'll ask the board, are we gonna have an executive session tonight, or do we want to postpone that? Hey, either way. I'm okay, postpone.
Okay.
Sound good?
Alright, we'll postpone the executive session for, um, the next time for the review of, uh, upper performance of an employee. Great, alright, thank you. Alright, and then. Uh, four point one, uh, public comment. So, um, since we have some folks here today with us, the board chair myself, we'll recognize audience members who have comments to present to the board. I know W came in and you said that, um, you potentially had some comments from the strategic listening session, so if you would like to. Talk to us now about any ideas or?
Well, I have some questions, how are things to comment on?
Okay.
Yes, so, um, so I know you all know that I'm facilitating our community gatherings once a month. And they're becoming more and more, uh, more and more organized in a way that people are really coming in with ideas and thoughts and sharing and it's moving into, we're gonna be looking at a formal organization in the next few months, but the primary thing that we're in the process of doing is getting ready for a sub area plan. And we're working with the county on having that, we're using Easton as an example, community, a rural community to write a sub area plan and they're planning on going to other non, other rural communities. And with the strategic planning that you are doing for the school, it's gonna be really important to have a segue into the sub area plan with that. And we, I don't know what your, what your strategic plan is involving, what it's looking at, what the content is, but the, a sub area plan covers everything. It's not just zoning, it's growth and management, it's talking about housing, it's talking about transportation, it's talking about retail, it's talking about all kinds of stuff in our area. And school and kids are a central part of our area. In fact, I've asked them to look at how, when the consultant comes in, I've asked them to look at how youth can give input into the sub area plan. Cause I'm a strong proponent and past professional area in youth development. And I really believe that our youth have leadership ability and it starts when they're at school, giving back to the community, being a part of the community. So I wanna see a segue how students can give into this sub area plan and the leadership piece, I think it's really important.
And so, like a, so like kind of like a temporary thing that gets updated every few years or so?
Oh, it's, so the plan's a 20 year plan. It's a 20 year plan, but it does get updated periodically. But this, Easton's tried twice to put one in and it's been knocked out. This is the first time we've had a consultant assigned for the county's paying for this, working with, the county's got a comprehensive plan that they're required to do, and we now will have a piece within that for a sub area plan. So Paul and Pass has one that has to be updated. So we're in a really fortunate state around that, um, having that done. You know, we've got roads, we've got building practices, we've got retail, we've got not able to bring retail back because of, you can't put a systemic system in, there are all kinds of issues in our community. And so this is the time to identify and prioritize and then work with the county however we can to start moving forward to bring our town back. It's a 20 to 50 year plan to bring Easton back, it's not overnight. It, you know, it's piece by piece, it's like with the school here coming back, with sports and everything coming back into, gonna take little pieces and start putting it back together. I'm a long time past resident and back to Easton, so I know the past and I'm hoping to see what the future might be. So I'm very nice to ask you to please consider sending someone, uh, to our meetings. I know Jason, you've come once in a while to our meetings, I appreciated that, to have some connections with us as we do this, because you're just such an important part of our community, the school is.
Yeah, which, which days are?
There's a third Thursday of each month at six o'clock. And I know you're on my newsletter list, I'm getting ready to send the newsletter out again. This next month, we're gonna, as a community, we're gonna take a look at the comprehensive plan, this, this sub area plan to get an idea of what's involved in it, and also talk about a formal organization, what that might look like. In March, we have the consultant coming in to give us the overview of what's gonna happen over the next six months as a community to develop this. And, and the other part of that is with the environmental study that was just completed and the noise issue that came out of that, it's something that we have been strongly voicing to our legislators and to the CRI 90 committee for a couple of years now. So as a community, if we can help you with that language or in supporting a letter or whatever you decide to do on that, we really wanna be behind this, because it's not just in school, it's 24/7. It's if you live along I-90, that the noise is an issue.
Yeah. And it's affecting everybody. It's an Eastern problem, for sure.
And when we shared with legislators that you spent $5,000 with that privacy fence up because of the biohazard issues we have, they were appalled that you had to do that. So we're also working on that one. So there's just things that connect us and we really wanna have a stronger connection with the school. So I'm looking forward to seeing what your strategic plan looks like, um, and hearing more on that. It's an area of work that I really like, enjoyed being in, so I'm anxious to see what's happening.
Yeah, I can provide a little update on that. Mentioned you've done the online survey, we have responses from a little over 50 folks. This is students and community members, obviously staff, so, and some definite trends are coming through, uh, from the data, so, uh, Ms. Lewis and I will share that with the board next month about kind of the overall trends that are coming through the data and then the board can kind of take the data and do what, uh, the board wants to do with it, so.
And I'm on the countywide career and technical education advisory committee, so I attend those throughout the year and with Will and Ross and also, so I would love to see that come back into Easton.
Absolutely.
I think that's a really important piece, so. Um, the other thing I would love to help with is a career day for this school, and I've talked with several entities out there who would love to come to this school and talk about careers, so I don't know if that's a plot down the road from tenant, but I'm certainly interested in, in making my connections known to you or whoever.
Connect with, uh, C.D. Klein, our new counselor, absolutely.
And I also know, I'm not on the one-tenth of 1% mental health advisory committee anymore, but I know that because I advocated for every school in the school, in the county received funding through that grant, so do you, I don't know what your amount was that you received there.
I received around, I think, 18 or 19,000.
Good, so, and it was an allocation not per student due, so they wanted to distribute it fairly across the school, so. That's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comment from online attendees?
No, I think we have a couple other community members as well.
Alright, if anybody does want to, uh, contribute any more public comment, feel free to drop it in the chat there, we can come back to that. Um, otherwise, we can get started on, um, agenda item five, the financial update report. So take it away, Nicole, thank you.
Can you hear us okay, Nicole?
Yep, I can hear everybody.
Gotcha. Fantastic.
So this is Easton's three-year cash graph showing our cash at 981,181. And these financials are as of December 31st.
Percentage wise, is that 24, 25?
Yeah, the, the yellow line there is our 20% minimum fund balance policy, and I can tell you the exact percent on our budget status report, I think it's 20, yeah, it is above 20.
And so, sorry, the, the yellow line, that's just based on the budget?
The budget, the yellow line is our minimum fund balance policy, which is 20%. So if the purple dot was right on the orange line, we'd be right at our minimum fund balance policy, and if we dropped below the orange line, we would be below our minimum fund ball, fund balance policy, which means we wouldn't be meeting our own policy. This is our general ledger trial balance, um, that's printed directly out of our software. And there's a page for. So we just print this one, include it with a packet to show that it balances against our county treasure, treasures report, so what we received from Kittas County. And that's the report we see, receive from the county, so we, um, we tie this, that they were sent, send us directly to the general ledger trial balance out of our software, and we reconcile, um, completely this month. We had no issues. And this is our budget status report, showing that these are as of December, which puts us at 33.3% of the way through the year, showing that we've received 29% of our budgeted revenues, and we've spent 28.5% of our budgeted expenditures, leaving our ending fund balance at 986,9897, which puts us at a 25% ending fund balance, or, so we're meeting our policy by five, above by 5%.
And our fund balance will go down as apportionment changes throughout the, the year.
Yeah, so January apportionment next month will be based on actual, so if we are over our budgeted enrollment, we'll receive additional revenues. If we're under our budgeted enrollment, we will, um, they'll decrease our, um, apportionment dollars by the amount of kids we may have over reported, but I wanna say we're right on track.
We are.
So our capital projects fund right there showed an, ending fund balance, um, that's debt service one more, 500 and. Capital projects had a ending fund balance of 567,765. And then our debt service, just a flow through, we did have a bus payment, um, and then our ASP, ending fund balance was at 26,862. And our transportation vehicle fund is at 15,450. And that 729 you see down there in parentheses, that's the money I transferred out of our transportation vehicle fund and put into our debt service fund to make our, I wanna say that was our bus prints, or bus interest payment. And are there any questions on these reports, or for me in general?
We, we like it when it's, uh, rather routine and boring.
Yes, I like that too.
It's good news for us. And then we're reconciling with the county, everything's coming out where it's supposed to, so that's good.
Yes, yep.
Thank you very much, Nicole.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
You too.
Alright, onto section six, the consent agenda review.
Yeah, this is our routine items that we have every month with general fund warrants, payroll and ASP warrants, and there is one thing I'd like to call attention to is our music teacher, a part-time music teacher who actually today was her first day, so she met with our fourth and fifth graders per class, and then our preschoolers. As you remember, preschool sort of their full day, this was their first full day today as well, so there were lots of, a couple little tired little girls walking down the hall at about three o'clock today, so, uh, once they get into routine, uh, I think they'll, they'll be fine, but today was, it was a long day for them, but, uh, Ashley has said the, uh, the classes were great and the kids picked up on things and she needed to kind of figure out where the kids were in terms of their, their interest in music and their knowledge level, and so she's happy and, uh, they are meeting down in the art room, so we put a, a bank of, you know, the electronic keyboards and other tech usable things, she has a guitar today and some kind of big drums, so kids are making shakers and everything, so yes.
No limitations to what she teaches for her music goods?
Um, no, thanks, no. So, I think she's a pretty veteran teacher, she's done this and, uh, I know the kids were excited and we'll do a, like I said, kind of a rotation, so this week it's four or five, I think next week it'll be two, three, following week it'll be K1 and then we'll repeat, so. When the kids are in music, the other kids are either in PE or, uh, outdoor ed, so it's kind of a three-week rotation, so, so start getting the elementary kids out there outside too.
I'm assuming at some point we might start discussing instruments.
Like, I think we bought 16 keyboards, so we're, we're okay there, but maybe marching band down.
Maybe in the second key.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills and pay the people.
Kids.
I'll take that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Onto, um, section seven, additional reports, uh, district operations report.
Alrighty. I'll start with the fire marshal inspection that happened on January 3rd. How many pages did you get?
Start with the badminton.
Yeah, so mine was seven. Seven, oh, from the back.
Then some.
Yeah. Ours is about seven as well. Okay. Yeah. Marvin is on, on, on par, he's, you know, it's his job to find things, he's certainly found some things, fairly simple things, um, uh, my focus was a lot on the emergency lights, not all of them were working, two weeks prior I checked them, and then the day of three of them decided to just go. But to be expected, um, you know, nothing surprised me anymore, so, um, I have, uh, three, those three are placed, but there are two additional ones that I'd like to replace because the ones aren't looking good. On the fridge, so sometimes it works, sometimes they don't. Uh, so I do have the emergency lights, just gotta change them out and the new ones are reception, right, so, um, working on that, uh, the X sign batteries, um, I have all the X sign batteries replaced now, they're all functioning properly as they should, uh, we have two older ones in the building, um, they're not on the building drawings, so I'm not sure if we necessarily need them or how that works, so I'm gonna contact Marvin and find out, uh, those, cause they don't have battery backups, and the power goes out, they go out as well.
I, I think they're, uh, they gotta be operational.
Yes, yeah, they have to have a battery backup that lasts at least 90 minutes, so, uh, so I'll be working with Marvin to see, you know, what the code says on that, if we need them, I can get them off, or I can get them replaced, I have two X signs on the over, they should be here tomorrow, and then, um, if we don't need them, we'll have extra, extra X signs. Just, uh, some other stuff, uh, extension cord usage in classrooms, daisy chain power strips, um, all of the simple solutions, I'll just end up getting power strips, uh, that have long enough tails on them so that they're not.
You're not alone in that.
Right, yes.
Extension cords, uh, everybody gets nailed for extension.
Yeah, but then, uh, there's some obstruction in the boiler, emergency turn off, a barrel, that was a 32 fix, just moved it out of the way, um, still ended up on the report, alright?
Yeah.
I'll work through it. Um, and then, uh, yeah, just some minor stuff, relocating things, so that, you know, combustible material up in the school, make sure they're moved to another location, a bus garage look fine, I think the channel, something like that, um, uh, the, we did have an extra tank for flammable material or cabinet, yes, thank you, uh, for, uh, for flammable materials, so I was able to move that out there and get our flammable materials, but it was satisfied him with that regard. Uh, moving on to the school facility lock mapping, uh, system, uh, contract with Future Sound Hardware, um, there, they've already mapped the school system, so the plan is to get a master key and grandmaster key system set in for exterior and interior doors, so we can take, uh, this and turn it into more like three keys, it'd also be ideal for emergency services in the event of an emergency, um, they will have a grandmaster key that'll look up and access anywhere, so it'll make it much easier for them and improve security and safety for students and staff. I just, uh, I received the, uh, the quotes for them, and, oh, and, um, I'm looking at getting the doors replaced on the, the girl's locker round, as well as one of the furnace control doors, it's a wooden door. Uh, it, it looks like it, it was kind of put up there as just kind of a blockade, so I'll get an actual door in there, um, with the UL rating, so that'd be properly secured. Uh, front entry, window repair.
Yes, sir, and you got a quote?
Oh, yes, sir, that's right, thank you. Uh, so, uh, for the cores and hardware, we're looking at about 16,610.86 cents, that's for changing out all the cores, sounds like a big dollar amount, it would be nearly double that or triple that if we replaced locks completely.
Yeah, what's the amount of cores?
Uh, yeah, just the cores, and so the nice thing about that, currently our doors, we have dorma, dorma cava and best locks, and their cores are interchangeable, so they just need to change out the cores, but the locking system, lever systems, which are about 300 to 500 dollars a piece, we don't need to change those out, just the cores, so, so I was happy to hear about that, that was exciting news. Uh, and then 3,342.38 cents for doors and hardware for the new doors, that's for, um, four doors coming in, they're still, uh, working on getting the quotes for, uh, two additional, uh, two additional doors downstairs, uh, that, that quote will be one, it, it'll be less than the 3,342. That's just for, um, installing different locking systems on the, um, bathroom doors here, so it does have an occupied, uh, unoccupied, uh.
Little flag.
Yeah, flag on there, and then also the lock, uh, it'll be easier for emergency services should maybe to, to pull a lock, uh, a key in the door, unlock it, should correct, try to fit a panel. So yeah, just waiting on one more quote for those other doors, I mean. So that's exciting, I'm eager to get that rolling, just for the security of the school and everything, it'll be a great, great thing to have done. Uh, front entry, a window repair, uh, the tour glass, they have received the 75% deposit, uh, they submitted the design, so by this Friday they expect to have the glass and we can schedule it. Uh, sewage pump two, um, so it works fine, everything's good with the sewage pumps, um, the alarm, what it was, there was a loose wire in there. Um, they told me not to examine anything beyond just the light, because they said if I touched anything with a loose wire in there and a shock man, I would be dead for Christmas, so I decided, uh, I took their advice and left it to them, so the Picotti brothers, they came in, they were able to fix the wire and they found two burnt out bulbs in one of the alarm systems and replaced that as well, um, uh, no charge to us, from what they were, uh, told me, and sewage pumps, uh, everything looks good on that end. Uh, ski lift chairs, uh, we continue to work on the ski lift chair, um, it's looking good, the, uh, engineering students, they've been working hard at it. They're putting skis on the seats and so that should look pretty neat, and then we'll work on getting, uh, fabricating some legs to put underneath it so we can put it down there and then stabilize it, uh, from the upper beam, and then, so we have that ready to go, just a matter of installing, it's gonna be a lovely addition.
The kids were putting on the, I think, the finishing coat down there, so the seat itself is black, where the apparatus is purple, so.
Nice.
It, it looks sharp.
Thanks, uh, let's see, onto the transportation report, uh, so, uh, from the last meeting, van quotes, we're looking at about $93,000 to $95,000 for a van, however, uh, Mr. Penoyer, our science teacher, and Mr. Eric Comble, they brought up a great idea, why go with the transits, we can accomplish the same objective by going with the minivan, uh, that has all-wheel drive and is half the cost, um, so, um, I'll be looking into getting quotes for a minivan and, um, whether it's low miles or if you want, still accomplish the same task and, uh, still make the all-wheel drive option, uh, so that's, yeah, yeah, that's something I'll be, uh, looking into, and then as I get close from that, um, I will update you guys with that information. Uh, buses continue to be in good working order, I check them daily, lights are working and everything like that, um, maintenance has been completed, oil changes, uh, they're not doing yet, so, but they're still working. Our new buses are working wonderfully, all the lights are working there, I still have a remainder that I need to schedule, uh, the bus three, uh, scheduled with the OT come out and inspect, we do have our summer inspection scheduled for April 7th, um, I anticipate that should, um, go up with that, I'll check. Looks good as long as I'm doing my part and making sure I keep up on the maintenance area. Uh, the bus drivers do a wonderful job keeping me updated as far as, um, pay rates, sales are.
Our, our maintenance schedule, where, how are we maintaining that documentation?
I keep a maintenance log, so every time, um, within the bus garage, anything that I do on the buses, whether it's washing the buses, um, spraying the salts gone, um, salt neutralizer, uh, or something as simple as putting DEF in the tanks, I record it, mileage and the, along with the date, I mean, uh, if I'm installing a new part, I'll include the part number of the date that I put on there.
It is, it's a paper copy, electronic copy, okay.
A paper copy, and I could certainly create a spreadsheet for it as well if, uh, if you guys would like a digital copy, I'd certainly do that.
Uh, other question?
Yes, sir.
The glass quote, is that for both doors?
No, sir, it's just for the, uh, left broken door, they said, uh, the glass in those doors are tempered, so the age of the glass shouldn't affect it, um, they said the reason why it shattered so easily could have been something as simple as an anomaly of glass that allowed it to, you know, when hit in the right spot, just allowed it to shatter. The other door, they said, by looking at it, it looks okay, that's why.
It just went teak.
Well, uh, one of the stands was knocking on the window to let somebody in and, uh, it shattered, so they are laminated, uh, type of glass, but.
Were we gonna get one, we were gonna get a reinforced, right? Wire reinforced.
That was initially the plan, however, fire code now prohibits schools, um, commercial buildings from having wired glass, uh, because it's, uh, makes it difficult to break through.
So two windows look the same?
Yes, sir, they will look exactly the same, no one changes, we'll have to get a new one for the glass, or, uh, by, for the glass.
Okay.
I love the, the last line there. About you being ready for your tests.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, yes. Yes, yes, indeed, um, I did go to Thorpe School District, I was feeling I had something about, uh, having the ability to pass the test. So I wanted the instructor there, uh, to run me through it as a, it were a test. Uh, he felt confident that I should be able to pass with no issues at all, um, he said, uh, I had a great deal of detail. Within the inspection, um, and there were some things that he, he talked about. Kept me on track. Yes, yeah, overthinking, I had something I've been working on, making sure, I gotta stay, gotta stay without overthinking. So stay the course, so, um, he is confident that, um, I'm ready to pass the test, so it's just a matter of getting that scheduled, so. Um, how I understand it is you will, um, work with him, let him know that he has an individual that needs to be tested, he'll assign a number. And then once he has that number, then he can schedule a test. Let's see, and then, uh, we have, Mr. Aaron Cobble purchased a lovely banner. That I was able to install on the fence right off the freeway out there, uh, advertising we are hiring bus drivers. Um, so we have had interest from one individual, um, but it's not working. So, um, but we have that there, so in the event of traffic or anybody driving by, they'll see the banner, hopefully they can get some attention.
Yeah, so that'll apply for whether they have a CBL to drive the actual buses, or whether they can drive our new vehicle that's passenger vehicle.
Well, the, the advertisement is for a CBL bus driver, um, if they don't have a CBL, we can certainly put them through the, the course. And give them the CBL, um, that is paid for, so, um, we'll be able to, uh, provide them with that, so. Um, one of the incentives, we will pay for their CBL class, they sign a contract, uh, saying they're gonna drive here, then I can get the CBL. Yeah. Yes, and so, um, hopefully, uh, we get some interest there, and, um, you guys know anybody? For kids, simple routes, uh, you know, and it's flexible scheduling, so. Yeah, if they don't wanna do routes, and they just wanna do athletics, and just wanna do field trips, it's, it's open.
And, and like you put in your report, I mean, it's, it's imperative that we get additional drivers, just because we are growing. We've got more ac- more activities going on, more.
Yeah, and if we hope to sustain that, um, we'll need the transportation, because even with me getting a CBL, I'll be able to cover down, um. With it and whatnot, but, uh, I won't be able to drive all the field trips, all the sporting events and all the routes.
Jeff, everything will come in?
Yeah, yeah, so I will cover down as best as I can, that's, that is for certain, uh, but having more drivers opens up the possibilities and options.
How old do they have to be to drive for the district?
Twenty-one years old, I believe, uh, it's twenty-one years old, and then to drive a bus. I think you have to have two years' experience, uh, at least in driving, so twenty-one years old is the least two years' experience driving.
And I don't know how that goes for school districts and bus drivers, but, like, all, all of our events are typically after school.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't know if, like, the driver from another district could drive this.
Yeah, and so how, how that would work is essentially, uh, I've reached out to Clam, um, they have, uh. A plethora of substitute bus drivers, I've reached out to them, um, unfortunately, the bus drivers aren't willing to, uh, substitute here at Easton. They're only willing to go as far as Clam, um, but should we need them, I'll continue to reach out to them, um, and be persistent. Uh, perhaps one of the bus drivers will say, yeah, sure, if that's the case, uh, all that's required is because they're driving for Clam. Their fingerprinting and, uh, or not already in the OSPI system, so I would just need to complete an app, or an application form. Yeah, the EDS system, and put their name in with their, um, with their license, or the driver's license information. Uh, OSPI can look up their, uh, criminal record and fingerprint, transfer that over as long as it's within a two-year period, after two years, um, they have. But if it's within the two years, they're good to go, and we just add an application for Easton School District, so we'll have an application. Application for Easton School District, we can track, you know, make sure we're up to date on their driver's license, so they have the medical certificate, they're up to date.
I mean, it's a good, good option to have available.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, so it's one of those things where as the need arises, you know, if it's anything, I still reach out to Clam. Thorpe, they do not have any substitute bus drivers, to my knowledge. Karma there, she hasn't, you know, said anything about substitute bus drivers, she's pretty straightforward, so I think they're looking for bus drivers as well. So it's just kinda one of the things that everybody's looking for, bus drivers, I'm still interested in how Clam will manage to get all those bus drivers. They do have a growing community, so, you know, maybe the business is there, um, but we're gonna advertise it, we've also got an advertisement in the newspaper as well, so. Will be created. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so that, and, and that would be, that would be wonderful, the more we can get the word out there, the more interest we can get, um, it would be great.
We have a lot of tour companies around here too, that have drivers.
Oh, there you go. Sounds like we might have to come to a community meeting.
We might have to.
Other than that, I think that pretty much wraps up my report for you guys for today, it was a long one to start, so.
Not as long as your first leader's over.
And the mural looks amazing.
Does that look nice?
Yes.
Oh, we're still in bed.
No, I wrapped this, I wrapped that up, I dropped that first.
Thank you, Jeff.
Superintendent Report.
Hi, sir, again, thank you very much, Jeff, appreciate that, uh, our enrollment is steady. We have one student, uh, leave us due to some family situations, but we had another student join us, so it's kind of a trade-off. Uh, we do have, I think, two more, actually three more kiddos maybe interested in joining, so. Uh, I think some of our marketing is working. We're, we're steady? I, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that will help us retain some kids. That's why the, uh, why we went to that model, to, and then, as long as we can do it financially, I think it's a, it's a great thing for kids. Enrollment is, is steady, um, we talked about, uh, Debbie brought up our, uh, letter to, uh. Legislators and, and see the, the Senator Warnox, or Warnick's response. It was, you know, I think the next day she said it, which I, I appreciate having heard anything else from any of the other legislators, but, uh. Very thankful that she responded to us, so, uh, hopefully, we can get some traction. The legislature's in session right now, and so far, I believe over twelve hundred bills have been introduced. So it's kind of fast and furious right there, but.
Or they'll just approve this one.
Maybe it'll squeak in through the, some of the apportionment at the end of the session, so, but I did appreciate her, uh, her, her getting back to us. And like I said, there are over, uh, over a thousand bills that have already been introduced. If you are bored and you want something to put you to sleep, go to this, uh, bill tracker, and you can see all the bills that, uh, WADA has. Identified as having some impact on, uh, on K-12 education. Right now, it's probably too early to even, you know, look, look too much into it, cause there's gonna be all the horse trading's gonna be going on. Uh, behind closed doors, so, things are just being introduced right now, and, you know, the real work will take, take place later. In terms of our marketing, like I mentioned, uh, Schoolmen, the company we're working with, we've had that many views. Over seven thousand views, uh, I'm not sure what reach and impression is, but.
And it says, reach refers to the number of unique people who have seen the video, so.
We're reaching lots of people, uh, I thought the ads themselves have been, have been great. I did ask Jen for some snowboarding pictures of her kids, so we'll put some snowboarding pictures, cause that's their next, uh, I guess. Thing that they wanna highlight is, you know, our snow sports, so, you know, our K-three kids going up there cross-country skiing on Friday, our kids snowboarding. Our snowshoeing that we have during outdoor, so that's kind of the next, next phase of it.
Again, along with that, a lot of it is, is marketing the community as well.
Absolutely, so, yeah.
I try to put as much as I can in my gift letter, it's only four pages.
We, we appreciate it, but, yeah, very professionally done, very responsive to, you know, uh, changes that, that I've requested, but, you know. Just seeing the kids out, outside, doing what, uh, what our students do on a daily basis is, is pretty cool, so I've been, I've been very happy with it, and results. So far are, you know, financially paying off, uh, with our enrollment. So that was the good news, now let's go into the, the bad news. Cause I'm a little bit troubled that this is not a bigger issue across the state than. As it should be. Right now, there are six districts in, uh. But, uh, binding condition, which means the state has oversight, there's another fifteen to twenty that are kind of right on the edge of that, so. You're looking at twenty-five or more school districts that basically are, uh, you know, in red. And there hasn't been a lot of traction at the state level to, to deal with this, so I am very concerned, uh, in terms of our budget here at, at Easton. We're okay right now, but, you know, in a couple of years' time, we'll be right there with everybody else, uh, unless things change dramatically. The big three, as they call them, uh, those are the three main topics that, uh, all the state associations want the legislature to look at. Is special education, uh, transportation, and then what's called MSOCs, or supply costs, material supplies, operating costs. To bring those up, those are kind of the big three that all of the associations, principals associations, school board association. Is highlighting for the legislature to, to deal with, but, uh, this was from another district, and it explained why so many districts are. Are struggling financially, it's not an issue of mismanagement, it's an issue of our apportionment isn't keeping up with our expenses. That's just the, the simple truth, but there is a little bit that might have to do with declining enrollments in some districts, but, um, not by and large. It's not consistent, and this is, there's large districts, there's a small districts, this is east side, this is west side, so there is no. You can't say it's an east side issue, you can't say it's a west side issue, it's, it's everywhere, it's a, a flaw in the funding system. Flaw in the funding system, and then the, let's see, the violation of the McLeary decision. Meaning, public education has to be the paramount duty of the state, when the McLeary decision was passed. K-12 budget was fifty-two percent of the state's budget, now it's forty-two to forty-three percent, that's a huge decrease.
All the schools just, they, they band together, instead of being individuals out there, so you need a delegate from each school.
And that's why we went with the big three, everybody's saying the same thing, yeah, increase our, our MSOCs, increase transportation, increase. Special education funding. Uh, Superintendent Reigdahl did a, uh, a press conference, or a, I guess, the state of, the state of the, state of the state address. And I pulled out a couple of charts that I found interesting, this, this first chart here is basically the, uh. The budget of K-12 education as a part of the state's gross national product. So you can see the average of all the other states is up here, where Washington is down here. Doesn't seem like a long, a large distance, but it's two, almost two point five billion dollars. You know, right about here is the, you know, the clear decision, so you can see how it went up, and then it's, you know, starting to slide back down, so. I found that interesting. Washington is, uh, not funding education as much as, you know, some of the, some of our other states. And this is what I mentioned, that prior to, or right after the clear decision, we're about fifty-two percent of the state's, uh. Uh, overall operating budget, and now we're down to forty-three, I've heard it's even less now, forty-two percent, so, over time, it's, it's slid. Here's just a chart showing the MSOCs costs, uh, our insurance has gone up, not eighty-five percent, uh, over a hundred percent. There's no sign, especially now what's going on in other parts of the US, of the churn's going down, but you can see all of these costs. Just like at home are going up, but, uh. Can't shut off the gas, cause we need to keep the kids warm, you can't shut off the lights, some kids here, uh, but insurance is, is the baby. That's, our bill was somewhere, when I first got here, about fifty, sixty thousand, now it's, you know, over a hundred and twenty thousand. So that's the doom and gloom, and then we'll come back to some good news, we got this beautiful mural back in the, uh. In, in the Soon Commons, this was designed by the ASV students actually last year, and we, and, uh, you know, worked with the artist when she had time and availability to do it. But, you know, that's, it's pretty nice, and it really brightens up the space, and we've added a couple little, uh, you know. Small couches for the kids to sit, and it's, saying it's okay for Eastern kids to have nice things.
Absolutely.
And hopefully they're feeling that, that we're trying to take care of them, and we're glad that they're here, as we are. Earlier before our meeting, I shared some old information from, uh, our records room that we found, some, some transcripts and some budgets. And some report cards, um, and if you were interested, I would share, uh, we can do a little tour of our records room, cause we're quite proud of it. Uh, Jeff has been doing lots of work in there, taking out some of our old file cabinets, I actually hurt myself taking out one of the, uh. The fireproof file cabinets, it's.
Oh, our jury trick.
My football coach, it's, I rubbed a little dirt on it, I didn't care.
Did you fill out the paperwork?
No, you're okay, I just licked it, I just licked it. Uh, but, there, there's some pretty interesting stuff back there, we found the gab, we'll let me use that for the board. Uh, but, uh, all credit goes to Rachel and her being proactive, and, you know, taking that bull by the horns, and, uh. Just appreciate that, that she's done that for us, but, uh, yeah, if you walk in the Commons and see that, that mural. Live, it's in person, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty cool, yeah, I didn't know the design that they were going with, but I think, I think that's great.
Just makes that space feel a little more.
So a little bit of doom and gloom, but also some happy stuff, um, and I will keep the board up to date as bills come and go. Through the legislature about, uh, possible impacts on us, and, um. Yeah, I think we're in for a long haul, and it might, session might go longer too, from what I'm hearing, because there is rumors of a ten to twelve. Uh, billion-dollar shortfall in two years. And you got a new governor, and things are, lots of new legislators as well, so it's, I think there's gonna be a lot of learning for the first, uh. Hundred days of the session, and then hopefully we'll get some resolution here at the end.
Any more word on the modernization?
No, that has to go through this apportionment cycle, but, yeah, once we get the, the green light, we'll get McKinstry in here, and we'll fire up the road. Yeah, that's already been approved, so it's just a matter of, I'm going through the, the legislative pieces. And nobody's passing bond, so there's lots of money in the construction funds, so.
Yeah, that's good.
That's a, fortunately a bad problem statewide, but it's a good problem for us. My report for tonight.
Do we have, um, speaking of the legislative sessions, um, are, are, do we, remember who's the legislator?
I, I think I've kind of been served in that role, but I'm, I'm happy to have all the board members take that over.
One, two, three, not it.
I said it first.
Billy's already in Olympia.
She's saying, I would love to do it, thanks, guys. I am happy to do it, and we'll keep the.
You're muted.
I'm informed.
Okay.
Thanks for, thanks for volunteering, Haley. Appreciate it.
All right, section seven three.
Ish, my computer. I, I do actually have meetings with our legislators on Thursday, and I think I'm gonna have a couple of minutes to at least like slide some stuff in about school board, even though I'm here for the realtors, I, I think we'll have time to do that. So, um, but Aaron's still doing a fabulous job. I think Aaron can keep doing what Aaron's doing, and then when something needs to happen, and I'm down here, I'm happy to take care of that.
I got it.
You're doing a great job.
All right, any other board member reports?
I don't know.
Anything else? Anything else, Haley?
So I just wanted to, uh, like, quickly expound a little bit on what I got cut off on in my car in the last section, where I was talking about how we've been doing such a great job of identifying, uh, risks to our students that are coming from the freeway and outside the building and noises and things. Um, and having just gone through breast cancer treatment for the last five years, I've been really personally focused on trying to find ways to reduce exposure, because like eighty percent of people with breast cancer are getting it because it's environmentally triggered. And I've also been going to, um, a Science Springs Institute, some science cafes that they've been having. One of the ones that I went to in December, uh, it was about, uh, breast cancer prevention and, uh, just trying to reduce the numbers, because what they're seeing is, um, right now, uh, under forty-year-olds are, I was diagnosed when I was forty-five, so I was already considered like a young person to be getting breast cancer, especially environmentally triggered. But my mother had it, um, my grandmother had it, so obviously we are types of people who respond to things in the environment that are triggering breast cancer. Um, so I'm kind of hoping that, you know, we can start, stop this for this next generation, but there's been an increase of over four percent of breast cancers of these environmentally triggered ones. Um, and so younger and younger people are now experiencing cancer, not just breast cancers, but it's way off the hook compared to any of the other cancers that they're, they're looking at. Um, but colorectal is like another one that's, that's very common in it. It just, um, through going to the Science Cafe and using the app from Science Springs Institute, it's called a Detox Me, it just helps you to identify things in your personal life, your home, your workplace, and schools and things where, um, changes can be made to make things that we're using safer, um, for everyone. And what they said is right now, it's gonna be a crisis for our healthcare providers because nobody gets trained on how to deal with toxic reduction in the healthcare industry at all right now. Like, it's not a thing. And, um, so they're gonna be having all these people coming in with younger and younger onset breast cancer, um, from the rates rising so significantly between the reports who are from two thousand one and two thousand nineteen, when they had run the data from. But it's just, um, really important, I think, that we really start to recognize how, um, you know, how much more plastic and PFAs we have in the environments. Um, and the reason it's particularly hitting me is because, uh, a couple things, and one is that, um, uh, people, women can be in certain industries where, uh, their estrogen, uh, production is impacted. Uh, that's explaining that part probably, but, uh, essentially they're at a higher risk to begin with. And so, um, certain careers can put them at higher risk, putting like firefighting as an example. Uh, but the, uh, the onset is also happening earlier because, uh, women, when they're going through changes in their life, so like puberty, um, through menstruation, through getting pregnant, through lactation, those are all times when the body is more susceptible to exposure to these things as well. So, and it's starting younger as well because of these exposures. So they have much longer time for women in particular to be severely impacted by, uh, the changes, uh, the mute, mutations in their body that are somatic, but are coming from the environment that are genetic ones. Uh, and so it's just really important, I think, that we're intentionally pulling back on exposing our kids to plastic, because I know it's really easy for all of us to be like, next time I'll deal with it. You know, like, you know, we need to buy the cheapest thing right now, and the cheapest thing is plastic, or the cheapest thing is this, you know, highly toxic thing, that if we instead bought something that was in the anti-toxic, anti-toxic cleaning product, it would be healthier for everybody in the building. And so it really is the health of the entire community that's in our buildings and things that we need to just start switching over products, demanding different things from vendors. If, you know, like they're offering some plastic. When I was at the Wausau Conference, um, last year, I was talking to one of the vendors and he just had little plastic things and fun stuff that he was bringing out. And I just, I said, hey, I don't want one of those, because I'm just, I don't need any more plastic. And it's like, you know what, I'm gonna change everything into bamboo for next year. Why, you know, why am I even making this in plastic? And so hopefully he showed up at Wausau this year with a whole bunch of bamboo items hanging out. Didn't know how that turned out, but, uh, I think people will really start to understand how important it is to protect our, everyone in general, but especially this next generation. And, um, we can do a big job with our inside environments of, with the Minnesota, just kind of doing things differently. Um, there's some other science cafes coming up. The next one I'm gonna go to is February fifth, and that one's gonna be more about PFAs. Uh, and then there's another one that's in April, that's about just, um, non-toxic houses and things like that. But it's, it's a really interesting series, and they actually have a great website, um, and some really great core values as far as what their organization does to just help with increasing prevention and making people safer in the US.
Like, uh, microplastics.
Yeah, but like especially in our, when our kids are drinking on plastic water bottles, that's not great. And they're drinking on plastic cups and plastic dishware and things like that. It's, it's not great. And when, and a lot of us grew up, we didn't have all this exposure to plastic. It wasn't so endemic to like every little thing that you touch. Uh, and so back in school, we had, you know, dishes that were glassware in different schools, and, and we weren't using all those disposables, right? Yeah, so just, anyway. That's kind of where I was coming from.
Yeah, thanks.
All right.
Did I hear earlier that we are postponing executive session in next month?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yeah.
Killer.
And we can keep the beginning of the executive session and just put our meeting together. If there's any time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Whenever you want.
I'm going in.
So I forgot we mentioned that the public facility district that, um, is coming into play for Clayelum and Easton from Eltites to the top of Snoopy Pass. It's a, one of those legislative things that's on the hill right now. They want to put in a taxed public facility district that would be supported by bonds and by tax. I think part of the taxing is coming from sales tax, so that they can build the Upper Kedaz County Pool Recreation Center. Um, and we're watching this closely. There's a lot of opinions out there on it. I love to have a swimming pool to swim in, but I've been very vocal from the start of this, that how are we gonna get Easton's kids to that pool? There's no public transit. The school buses are not available for us to use unless they're rented or it's a school event. Most of our parents don't have cars that can take their kids, or they're working, they're commuting. And the cost, I think they're looking at probably a monthly fee or something like that. So we need to, I, we're watching that. Um, Easton really hasn't been introduced to this idea. No one's come and talked to us, even been invited. Snoopy Pass is a real happy that they haven't been included in the conversation. Don't know where it's gonna go. And if the funding is only for the Upper Kedaz County Rec Center, I will tell you that I'll be vocal about that. If they have to have a district and they have to have seven people on that committee, that district commissioners, um, four from Clean Clayelum and three at large, I'm hoping we have somebody, it's Snoopy Pass at Easton, who are willing to be on that and to fight for some of those dollars to come into our community, because we need a community center here that we can use. Um, Snoopy Pass doesn't even have a ballpark or a game room for the kids. So we're watching that. I don't want to sound negative. I like the idea. I miss the swimming pool. I would be in it probably almost every day, but I'm concerned about our community ability to utilize that. So just on that one. And also, Aaron, if they do that, that's a bond. And if Easton ever decides to do a bond or levy, you've got, you've got competition for a bond there too. So that's the other thing. Um, I have been very pushy, outspoken to West Dot regarding Tree Farm Road and the half, the back half of Railroad Street not being maintained. Those are state roads and our school buses are on them. And we've talked with Abara about that one here this summer. So I want you to know, I'm still, I'm still pounding away at that one, because those roads are terrible. Um, and then, um, the other thing is, we, I would love to see the letters that incentive the market's response. So give us an idea of what we can do as a community to help you. We really want to help.
Write the board dogs on our website.
Is it? Okay, I didn't know it was there.
Everything's there, you bet.
Okay. And yes, I love your marketing, but you're doing, Aaron, and I'm just wondering if they're doing geofencing, if they're looking at certain areas, or if they're just sending it out.
Certain areas.
Okay. Um, and again, all this, bring it to us. I publish the newsletter once a month. If you want to send it to what you want by the last week of the month, I usually send it out the first week of the following month. And I'll put a whole page in for the school. Love to do it.
Thank you.
If you want a summary of your board, whatever, I, I, you want pictures, just email it to me. And yeah, literally, we're gonna have to find some way to fund a newsletter because it's going to be a really big document to send out to email. But we have over a hundred and fifty people on our email. But thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a fifty-year school person educator, so I, I totally support education, many different realms.
All right. We can hop into Board Business eight point one, the Eastern Policy Review.
As, uh, we are in the six thousands now, and then we'll circle back, I think, to the four thousands after, after we're done here, but, um, go through these one by one. Sixty-one eleven was, uh, tuition. This is a discretionary model or a policy, so I'm not sure that would be the best fit for us. I'd like the board to say that. Sixty-one twelve. Rental or lease of our, our own property, so that's a central prop.
That one applies.
Yep, so we need that one. Sixty-four, or, excuse me, sixty-one fourteen, um, gifts, our donations from community members, gifts to staff. I would suggest we probably do have this one in our policy.
We did.
It is discretionary.
We currently have one, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, we do. Sixty-one twenty.
Uh, on that, one for gifts, I think that at the last meeting, we talked about bumping it from five hundred and bumping it up, just because five hundred bucks isn't a ton these days, and it's not unheard of to see a thousand dollar donation to the school. So that was, I think that was the only comment I had on that particular policy.
Yeah. Sixty-one twenty is authorizing me to, is the investor money. It could not be done without the board's knowledge, but it gives me the authority to do that. That one's encouraged. It's gonna have to go there. Sixty-two ten, in more purchasing items, excuse me, there is a, a total amount that we can put in there. What we want to set.
We have that dollar set already in existing policy. I didn't flip it back and forth.
Where, where existing policy? Obviously not.
Wait, she moved over here? Because you were snoring, Ari.
I was snoring?
Yes.
Sorry.
Let's turn my caps on, see if I can get this on. Hey, caps off. Did we forget what password you used?
Yes.
Never log out of my email, so, uh, I can go back and, uh, let the board know what figure this is. I wanna say it's, because it's capital, I wanna say it's ten thousand.
Okay.
But I know it was a
Sixty-two ten, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I need access.
It won't let me in either.
Okay, so I will, let me make a note of that. So we can, why don't we table that one until we get the correct figure?
Okay.
Yeah, that seems to be the right one.
I probably didn't, obviously didn't put in my settings correctly. Sixty-two twelve, charge cards, credit cards. Proceed for that already, follow, just an updated version. Sixty-two thirteen, reimbursement for travel. Yeah, and not just an updated version of our current policy. Sixty-two fifteen. Yeah, another update. Got another total here, let's see if I can. So we're told we have five thousand. That would probably be, probably keeping that, that number. Certainly not decreasing it, and it is an essential policy. Sixty-two sixteen, reimbursement for goods. Update of our current policy. Sixty-two seventeen is a new policy. I think this is for electronic transfer, which, I guess all of us are paid electronically anyway, so. It's an essential one, it's encouraged here, but actually it was a potential, so we all do it. And then finally, sixty-two. Making sense, so.
Do, do we, do we have a, a backup means of that?
Backup means of?
I mean, if, let's say, there is, now you can't do anything.
I know there have been times where we've had to delay payroll, uh, due to, you know, weather and and since everything's tied into Skyward, I mean, it's all K-twenty.
Right.
Not just us, it would be, yeah, it would be every, it would be everybody.
That would be a mess.
So the, I'll leave that to the board. We were gonna table sixty-two ten until we got the, the totals, but
I think
My way of a day would probably be to
Take in the last
Except all those.
Except all those. I mean, I, I don't know what you guys thought are on sixty-one eleven.
That was a tuition.
I don't know that we need it. But is it?
But it's one that we could have and play for the future, so I have no problem.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve them all.
With the, excepting of the table.
Yep.
Except for the sixty-two ten. And then bumping up to a thousand dollars on the gift amount. Haley remembered not the
Need sixty-two twelve, or sixty-two, or sixty-one fourteen.
Yeah.
Sixty-one fourteen.
Unless we're currently at a thousand, but I think, I think we're five.
It's at five. It's at five hundred right now.
Yeah, yeah, I think we bumped that up. It was all dressed.
Right?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Second.
Hi.
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 Captain.
Captain.
Aye, aye, captain.
As the board said earlier, we are going to postpone the executive session into February for, uh, evaluation of a public employee. for evaluation of a public employee.
That's correct.
Next one. Bottom most.
Twenty-four, I think. Was it? That's pretty bad. Oops. Sharing the good news.
It might snow this weekend. Get rid of the Arctic tundra.
Yes, I would agree with that.
By like washing it with rain.
That's fine. Fifteen degrees and dusty, it's a better rain.
The cold officially came up thirteen weeks. And all thirteen died. It's all thirteen, my piglets died.
I mean, all thirteen were gonna die eventually.
Yeah, they were all gonna die eventually. Now, now mom and dad, the older brothers and sisters, just didn't get to enjoy it. At least they probably went quietly and peacefully.
I didn't hear them. It saved me from having
Good news I have, our ski chair lift is coming close. And some new seating in the columns for the kids and their wonderful Please to see what the kids are gonna come up with. I could watch, she did it over, you know, winter break, so I'd log into our camera system, let's see her up there. Very talented lady.
I forgot to put something on the maintenance report. I'm working on the iron crate electrical, they actually get these lights fixed. So they're gonna try and transition over to LED lights in the front, right here as well. So I spent a couple weeks, so they should be able to park some here shortly.
Awesome. So we encourage the board, I think we're gonna have a boys' basketball game here. I think the girls are probably finished up. If you're able to cheer the boys on, I think they have one, is there two games left? What's that?
Is there one tomorrow?
Uh, their girls' game tomorrow.
All right, yeah, for the sharing of the good news, go Jags.
Yes, go Jags.
I like hearing all the Jag, uh naming, naming that your Jag town, Jag wedding.
Jag wedding. Still working on the Jag wedding.
We got, we got Jag swag as well.
That's correct.
So I just need a motion to I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second. I got, I got other stuff I gotta go do, sorry guys.
All right.
Thanks Haley.
Thank you.
Bye guys.
Have a good one.
Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate the time.